Okay, good afternoon and I thank you for that assistance on our technical issues there. Like, like to call to order the May thirteenth, twenty twenty one Little Rock Planning Commission meeting. Can you call for a roll call and confirmation of a quorum?
Roll call. Commissioner Craig Barry.
Here.
Dr. Harold Benton.
Here.
Derek Brooks.
Present.
Scott Hamilton.
Present.
Todd Hart.
Here.
Marlon Haynes.
Here.
Robin Ramon.
Here.
Diana Thomas.
Commissioner Thomas is here.
Thank you. Michael Vickers.
Present.
Robbie Vogel.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move into approval of the minutes for the April eighth, twenty twenty one meeting. Do we hear motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Second?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second roll call vote.
Barry.
Aye.
Benton?
Here.
Is that an aye?
Aye. Sorry about that.
Brooks?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Ramon?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
The minutes are approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, can we go ahead and move into the consent agenda?
Following is the consent agenda for the Little Rock Planning Commission, May thirteenth, twenty twenty one. You have two items on consent and deferral. First is item number four, Z ninety-five seventy-seven. Dunahoo multi-sectional manufactured home conditional use permit, thirteen eleven three oh five Sardis Road. The applicant failed to respond to staff comments and requests for additional information and a revised site plan. Staff recommends this item be deferred to the June tenth, twenty twenty one Planning Commission agenda. Item number five, Z ninety-two ninety-eight A Stevens Laundromat, conditional use permit, eighty-four twenty Scott Hamilton Drive. The applicant failed to send the required notice notifications to surrounding property owners. Therefore, staff recommends this application be deferred to the June tenth, twenty twenty one Planning Commission agenda. Next are the items on consent approval. Item A, file number Z seventy-eight ninety-eight D. Cross Street Elderly Housing PRD Revocation, ten twelve South Cross Street. Staff recommends approval of the PDR revocation request. Item B, Z ninety-five sixty-one, a rezoning from R two to AF, eighteen six oh one Cooper Orbit Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested AF rezoning. Item number one, G twenty-three four seventy-six. Cottondale Lane Partial Rightaway Abandonment, immediately west of Riverfront Drive. Staff recommends approval of the requested abandonment of the portion of Cottondale Lane located west of Riverfront Drive, specifically west of the existing trail crossing, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis in the Agenda staff report. Item number two, Z sixty-nine seventy-four D. City of Faith Correctional Facility Conditional Use Permit Renewal, Fortino one South Garfield Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP subject to the following conditions. The CUP is approved for a time period to coincide with the current Bureau of Prisons contract, expiring March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the next five year renewed extension of the BOP contract. And also if the City of Faith federal contract collapses or is canceled, the CUP is voided. Item number three, Z ninety-five seventy-four Phillips Duplexes Conditional Use Permit, Northwest Corner of West Thirty-seventh and Zion Streets. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in sections D, E, and F, and the staff analysis in the Agenda staff report. Item number eight, LU twenty twenty-one fifteen zero one. Land Use Plan Amendment from Low Density Residential to Medium Density Residential in the Guyer Springs West Planning District at seventy-five twenty North Chico Road. Staff recommends approval. Item eight point one, Z ninety-five twenty-nine A, All-E Apartments PDR, seventy-five twenty North Chico Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D, E, and F, and the staff analysis in the Agenda staff report. Item number ten, LU twenty twenty-one nineteen zero one. Land Use Plan Amendment from Suburban Office to Commercial in the Chenal Planning District at seventeen eight fifteen Cantrell Road. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request to amend the land use designation at the subject site from suburban office to commercial with a PKOS designation along the westernmost fifty feet of the parcel running perpendicular to the property line. Item ten point one, Z sixty-two fifty-eight B, a rezoning from O one to C three, seventeen eight fifteen Cantrell Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested C three zoning, subject to the west fifty feet of the property being maintained as an undisturbed buffer with enhanced landscape plannings at the time of property development. Item number eleven, S ten seventy-three M, Lot Two Arkansas Systems Office Park, replat seventeen five hundred Chenal Parkway. Staff recommends approval of the requested replat and associated variances, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda staff report. That concludes the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Commissioners, okay, hearing none. Pick a motion to approve.
Go move.
Okay, we've got a motion. How about a second? Second. Got a motion and a second, and can we have a roll call vote?
Barry?
Aye.
Benton?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Ramon? Ramon?
Sorry about that. Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Vickers?
Aye.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, let's see, if your property item was on the consent agenda, you are free to leave or you're welcome to stay and hang around and see what all we do later. Most people leave. All right, thank you. Okay, at this point, can we move forward with a presentation of the hearing items for this evening?
Okay, Mr. Chair, on the regular agenda, I'd like to start with item number nine.
Okay.
File number Z fifty-eight seventeen K, Cantrell West Retail Center, PCD, located at fifteen one twenty-two Cantrell Road. Mr. Chair, the applicant is here and simply wants to request a deferral of this item.
Okay, can the applicant with item number nine come to the podium and state your name?
How you doing? Jess Griffin. I'm the applicant. We've been meeting with the neighborhood and trying to get something that would be good for both us and the neighbors. And so they've asked that we defer and still keep negotiations of trying to work out a development that will make everybody happy. And so in their wishes, we're asking to defer. Sorry for the late notice and that's where we're at.
Okay, commissioners, we have a request on the floor to defer until the June tenth meeting. Might we get a motion for that?
Or move? Motion?
We have a motion. Second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. If we can get a roll call.
Barry?
Aye.
Benton?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Aye.
Ramon?
Aye.
Thomas? Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Was that an aye vote?
Yes.
Vickers?
Aye.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Thank you. See you next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the regular agenda is item number six. File number Z seventy ninety-one C, property located at eight ten Brookside Drive. Presbyterian Village, the owner of the eleven point six six acre property located at the north end of Brookside Drive and east of Reservoir Road is requesting that the property be rezoned from PRD, Planned Residential District to MF twenty-four multifamily district. The rezoning is proposed to allow future multifamily development. The property is currently undeveloped, mostly wooded. The property is located in an area of mixed uses and zoning, including several multifamily developments along Reservoir Road. Multifamily developments zoned MF twenty-four and PDR are located north and west of the site. Nursing Home and Assisted Living Facilities zoned O three, POD and R five are located to the south. Mixed commercial uses are located to the southwest. Grassy Flat Creek is located along the east property line on property owned by the City of Little Rock. And single-family residences are located on the R two zone property east of the creek. The city's future land use plan designates this property as residential high density. The requested MF twenty-four zoning will not require a plan amendment. The applicant provided the preliminary drainage analysis for this property. The preliminary drainage analysis shows that future development of this property will have no adverse drainage impact on the surrounding properties. And prior to release of a building permit for this site, a detailed hydrology and hydraulic analysis, which complies to all codes and manuals, must be submitted. The applicant also submitted a traffic study which analyzes the future MF twenty-four development of this property. The traffic study concluded the following. With the low increase in traffic volume at the intersection of Rodney Param Road and Brookside Drive during the AM and PM peak hours, there's expected to be minimal impact to traffic operations at this intersection if the development is constructed as proposed. Staff does concur with the traffic study. Staff is supportive of the requested MF twenty-four zoning. Staff views the request as reasonable. The proposed MF twenty-four zoning will be compatible with the general area along the Reservoir Road corridor. There are several other multifamily developments in the area. The proposed MF twenty-four zoning is also consistent with the city's future land use plan designation of RH or High Density Residential. The request is on should have no adverse impact on the general area. In addition to that, staff did supply several additional factors that we thought that made this location a good multifamily development. I'll not go through all of those, but basically they all have to do with the close proximity of this site to things like bus route, employment opportunities, schools, parks, and other amenities and service trades. Therefore, with that, staff does recommend approval of the requested MF twenty-four rezoning.
Okay, thank you for that description. Let's see, is the applicant for item number six present? If you could, go to the podium and state your name and share any information that you like.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Brian Dale from Joe White and Associates, and I would like to introduce our team and give a brief introduction of our rezoning request. With me tonight, I have Blake Wiggins and Joey Wiggins, the developers, and Ernie Peters with Peters and Associates. The application before you tonight may seem familiar. In December of twenty twenty, the Planning Commission approved the rezoning of this property to R five, a density of thirty-six units to the acre. The rezoning application before you now is a request for just twenty-four units to the acre, MF twenty-four. The developer has listened to the opposition and has reduced the density request by a third, a reduction from thirty-six units to the acre to twenty-four units to the acre. As stated by staff, the property in this application is currently owned by the Presbyterian Village. Wiggins Family Real Estate Holdings has the property under contract contingent upon the approval of this rezoning application. The property contains eleven point six seven acres and is generally located north of Rodney Param Road and east of Reservoir Road. The property has two access points. The main entrance will be from the south off Brookside Drive with a secondary entrance to the north off White Rock Lane, which connects to Reservoir Road. As shown on the first slide, the land use plan shows this property as residential high density. We are not requesting an amendment to the land use plan because this zoning falls within the current land use plan. On the second slide, you will see the surrounding zonings. Starting with the south, we have existing apartments that are zoned R five. To the southwest is a nursing home that is zoned O three. To the west is the Reservoir Heights condominiums, they are PDR. To the north is an existing apartment complex that is zoned MF twenty-four. And to the east is Grassy Flat Creek that is owned by the City of Little Rock and is a buffer between this property and the existing residential development. The application that is before you this evening is simply a rezoning to MF twenty-four. However, I expect the opposition will bring up a height variance, storm drainage, and traffic. I'd likely, I'd like to quickly touch on each of these items. With the reduction of density from MF, from thirty-six units to the acre to twenty-four, the developer does not need and will not request a building height variance. Should this rezoning be approved, the developer will comply with the building heights requirement that is in the permitted zoning. Staff has a preliminary drainage analysis that has been prepared and submitted. Grassy Flat Creek does have a hundred-year map floodplain and a map floodway. This development will have a detention facility that will comply with the City of Little Rock's stormwater detention ordinance. The detention facility will not alter the hydraulic study that was performed by FEMA on Grassy Flat Creek. The third item is traffic. I don't want to pretend to be an expert in this area, which is why the developer has hired Ernie Peters who is prepared to speak tonight if requested. But I will state the project has the luxury of two access points which splits the traffic towards two different arterial streets. Peters and Associates has prepared the traffic study which shows the two arterial streets can accommodate this traffic. This traffic study has been submitted to staff as stated. I'd like to thank you for the time to present this information to you, and I will turn the next part of the presentation over to Blake Wiggins. Then we'd like to reserve the rest of our time to respond to any issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, for taking the time tonight to meet with us. Instead of reiterating what Ryan stated, I just want to implement that the City of Little Rock has a rising increase of needed for apartments. The occupancy is at an all-time high right now. And there's nothing new in this area that's been built in the last ten years or so. So we feel like this is a good project for the community, for, you know, everybody, working-class people that they're looking for a home while the home prices are rising. We can provide some sort of community for these people. So I just want to say thank you for your time, and we want to reserve the rest of it and be happy to answer any questions after the opposition.
Okay, looks like we have about four cards of folks that want to speak in opposition of this particular item. We'll start off. The first card I have is Jerry Herbert. Jerry, are you? Okay, yeah, approach the podium, state your name, and share with us your thoughts.
My name is Jerry Herbert. I live at fourteen Arrow Ridge Court in Leewood. My property, because of the slope in the back, is a three-level house that is in the middle with a panoramic view of this property. My property investment for the last five years was somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars. And we did that so we wouldn't lose money when we went to sell and we had to move. But if this goes in, the property value is going to tumble. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, it looks like we may have a couple of folks online. Is there Dana Renard? Dana Renard? Okay, let's see, the next card that I have here in attendance is like Brian Tennerman? Oh, she is. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, yeah, we can hear you now. Okay, thank you, Ms. Renard, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I'm having some technical difficulties this afternoon. Eight oh one Shea Drive, which also backs up to the, to the property that's in consideration. And my biggest concern is, is that I'd like to understand what the reasoning for recommendation is by the Planning Commission when there are already seven hundred apartments in the immediate area that are sitting vacant. And another two hundred and eighty apartments will put us close to a thousand apartments in that area that are sitting vacant. There's not a need for additional working-class housing in that area. That's my opposition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, the next card we have is Brian Tennerman. You can approach the podium, state your name, and share with us your thoughts.
Hello, thank you. My name is Brian Tennerman. Just going to touch on a couple of things, try not to take up too much time. One thing that was a comment earlier about that this was a third reduction in the request. Last time we met, the apartment units were at three hundred. I believe that was during the height variance meeting, so now we're down to two eighty. So I don't, I don't believe that's a third reduction. So this really isn't a big change in what's going to happen on that property versus what was just voted down a couple of months ago by the board. Traffic study, I know we've got an expert here, but based on some things that I've done in last time, my numbers matched up pretty well with his. According to Apartment Association, you have an average of two point five, or excuse me, one point six two cars per apartment, and about five trips per day per household or per apartment. So if you've got two hundred and eighty units, it would be pretty hard to only have about two hundred cars leaving and going per day, according to the traffic study. So if you do the numbers on this, it's more like twelve to fourteen hundred trips per day. And for people that live nearby, they're going to watch, that's about a car a minute, that's going to go back and forth in people's backyards and down Brookside where there is an assisted living community there. And there's actually a speed bump that's been put in because of safety. That many cars going over that road means speed bump can't be there anymore. The traffic, the traffic's too high for that. And so I would assume it's been put in for some reason due to safety. So why do, why do we need to increase traffic on that road? Another thing is COVID has changed the game on where people can live. They can now pick where they want to live because so many people are working from home. There's a lot of people that are moving out of cities because they don't want to live in the city. They want to live somewhere else. So why do we want to boost up a transient type of development, MDU, multi-dwelling, where homeowners or, excuse me, the tenants stay an average of twenty-seven months? They really could break a lease, get out if they wanted to, and move out of town. Where a homeowner averages thirteen years. So if Little Rock wants to hold and have people invested in the city and want to stay here, I would think you would have more approval on R two versus something that's, that's multi-dwelling. Another point I wanted to bring up real quick was we've mentioned that this was on the planning for years, that it was high density. Before PRD, it was actually R two. So that's a pretty big jump to go from R two, which is what the majority of the people in Leewood in the area, it's everywhere purchased, thinking this is what I'm going to be around, and I'm going to invest like this gentleman did here, invest in this area, knowing this is what's going to be in my backyard. Well, there's actually a document, Reservoir Neighborhood Action Plan, that was actually a co-document with the Planning Commission in two thousand and one, signed by the Planning Commission, that actually brings up points like the resolution of the Planning Commission in the City of Little Rock, Arkansas, support the Reservoir Neighborhood Heights Action Plan. That was signed in March of two thousand and one. Here's a couple of things on the plan, on the use, the land use there. Prevent conversion of residential property into non-residential use. Limit expansion of new commercial development in the neighborhood. Retain natural areas such as trees and grass. Now that's something that's only twenty years ago for this piece of property and that neighborhood, and to jump to apartments is a pretty big leap. As far as there being no adverse effects, I can speak personally to this. I am moving. I've already sold my house. I'm out. I'm losing good neighbors. They're losing us. Hopefully, I think I'm a good neighbor. There are adverse effects to this, to this change. I don't think this is the right move. Any questions?
I have a question. Why did you move before the decision was made?
We've already gone through it once. I don't think anybody's going to stop. So I made sure that my people buying my house know it's not the best property move in the world, so. I don't want to keep fighting the battle unless there's going to be houses back there.
Another quick question, this, Commissioner Vickers. You said you had just some studies. Did you get any independent third-party studies to do on your analysis that you presented to the, to the planning board?
You said you did some numbers. I'm trying to say that you have.
You talked to me or Vickers?
No, 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 I'm Commissioner Vickers.
Okay.
I was saying, did you have any, did you have any studies or you said, did you have any independent third-party studies on those analysis that those numbers that you were stating? Or these are just assumptions or just a guess or estimation of your?
Where did I get my numbers? I got them from the Apartment Association and energy.gov.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Thank you very much. Okay, next card I have, it's like Lee Beverley. Beverley? You can approach the podium, state your name, and share with us your thoughts.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Lee Beverley. I live in Leewood. I live close to Brian. I'm speaking in opposition to the rezoning. I sent you earlier a petition that has about six hundred. Today, it has about six hundred signatures on it. We've got a hundred signatures in the last week, all in opposition to this rezoning. I'm not here to talk about the petition. We're opposed to the rezoning for a lot of reasons. You've probably got a lot of letters with all kinds of reasons on them. One of our major concerns is that we don't have any guarantee of what will actually be built on this lot. This is an application for a general zoning permit. If this is approved, the developer will be able to put just about anything he wants on this lot, as long as it fits the MF twenty-four designation. The local residents have no assurance of what will eventually be constructed here. This isn't a vacant lot on the outskirts of town. It's fully developed. It's an infill lot. There's residential units on two sides of this property. Actually, on three sides, but R two on one and a condo association on the other. Some of the houses have been here for sixty years or more. It's been a very settled area for a long time. This is not a lot that should be zoned as a blank slate to develop any way a developer wants to. As an example, the site itself is very sensitive. It's very steep on the west side. There's a lot of old growth timber on it, probably over a hundred years old, many of the trees. An acre of the property lies in the floodplain, as has been discussed. It's next to that sensitive green space that the city owns. And there's going to be a lot of cut and fill on this property. Yet we have no grading plan that's been submitted. I'm not sure that a grading plan has ever been produced on this property. If I was in Reservoir Heights, which is just to the west, I'd be scared to death of what might happen on this lot because I simply don't know. I don't know to what extent this developer is going to cut into that hill. For all they know, they could destabilize their property. They have no assurance as to what's going to happen on that, on the side of that, on that lot. We don't have any reason to doubt Mr. Wiggins when he describes what he's going to do, but we recognize that a lot can happen between approval of this rezoning and actual construction. We know that construction prices are going up. The stock market is a little, a little sketchy these days. Construction budgets can change. We're not even sure that Mr. Wiggins will actually buy this property. And if he does buy it, we're not sure that he will develop it. And if he could resell this property with this MF twenty-four zoning, and we could be dealing with a completely different developer in a year, or two, or three, or four, this is exactly what happened the last time this property went up for a PRD. It was in two thousand and one, it was done as a PRD, and today it's being resold, never having been developed. That's what we're afraid of. It was in 2001, it was done as a PRD and today it's being resold, never having been developed. That's what we're afraid of. We don't know what's going on in this thing. We have a lot of concerns about the project, but we think at the very least, the developer should provide a committed detailed plan for the site and the facilities. He should be held to it during construction. As you know, this would be best accomplished by rezoning to a PRD and not a blanket general zone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beverley. Any questions from commissioners by chance? All right.
I do have a question. This is Robin.
Okay, Robin, go ahead.
And this is really for staff to help me understand the existing zoning. And I may have asked this exact same question at the last, the last time this came up. But as I understand it, it's currently a PRD for that particular independent living apartment facility. And I believe the last gentleman to speak sort of advocated for, you know, another PRD. So would that be possible to go from a PRD that was never developed? To a second PRD that was similarly specific in exactly the development plan? Or is there some other reason why that type of conversion just never happens or never works? I understand there's some uncertainty about the purchase and this is contingent upon the approval. But I'm just curious about whether that would be a solution.
The property, current zone of the property is PRD, but that's an expired PRD. PRDs do expire if they're, if they're not initiated after a certain length of time. But it would be, I mean, that would be an option. The applicant could file a new PRD for the property.
Is, it would be great, at least for me. I don't know if any other commissioners feel this way. But if the applicant could speak to why that simply is not an option, whether, you know, whatever the reasons are. I'd be interested in learning why that's not an option from their perspective.
Yeah, if the applicant, approach the podium and respond to the commissioner's question.
Brian Dale again with Joe White and Associates. A PRD is an option. The developer has still been working on what type of units and mixes that they would want for the property. That's kind of market bearing. When you do a PRD plan, it is very specific and detailed. We have worked with staff on plan developments in the past. And anytime there's a little revision or something that wants to be done, it has to go through the whole process again. They know that they would like to build a high-scale multifamily project. As for the unit mixes and all the details, those have not been worked out yet. And to spend all the money to develop those types of plans and stuff is a lot, not knowing that they even have the proper zoning or allowed to do the project at this point.
Chair, if I may add a little bit to that. Chair, if I may add a little bit to that.
Oh, absolutely.
City staff perspective and planning and development. For us, typically a planned development is a larger scale development that encompasses more than just one use. We do have a planned development that's more of a planned unit development that is a single-use type of planned development. But usually those are done if a lot of variances are needed for the process that you may have to go to both. Maybe the City Beautiful Commission for Landscape Variances and Board of Adjustment for other variances. That that planned development process would help streamline that process and for approving one, but it's only for the single use. For this developments, and there, there was not those variances requested, other than the original one that they did. And the prior application, which is not substantial to this one, is for the height variance. The setback variances and other variances that we're looking for, just is not, not, not something that is requested with this development. So at that time, just to give it a more fluidity in design of what a layout is for any building or location that's on there. Straight zoning was what was discussed when they come back with the second application.
Commissioner Remond, does that give you some, some feedback?
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. We've got one more card. Speaking in opposition is Ann Parrott. And if you approach the podium, state your name and share with us your thoughts. You might want to pull the microphone down just a little bit.
Okay, is that it? Okay. My name is Ann Parrott and I live at 807 Shea, which backs right up to the grassy Flat Creek. Which is not much of a barrier. It's, you could, it's like from here to that pole or maybe that pole. It's, it's being misled a bit. A couple of other things that, just listening to the talking here, I caught when Blake, I forgot, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. Wiggins, right? When Mr. Wiggins was talking about first, he mentioned that there was a need for these working-class apartments. And then later, when they were doing the rebuttal, they mentioned high-end apartments. This goes to substantiate Mr. Beverley's concern about what actually is going to be built there. Because even in their own conversation, they don't seem to be consistent. The other thing. I've lived here a while and I used to live out Highway 10. I was involved in fighting Pleasant Ridge Shopping Center when it was, it proposed. We lost. But among, the thing that I remembered from that was that they also presented a traffic study in which they assured the city that no problem, there would be no impact because they were going to put in a traffic light. See how that worked out. It has made me a bit suspicious of traffic studies. I don't know about you all. Maybe you've had better success with them. But I go more with what Brian Tennerman was saying about the volume. If they're going to put in a lot of apartment buildings, there are going to be a lot of cars. No, that just happens. So I think that this is ill-advised. And I think that one of the better things you could do would be to deny this and give the developer the ammunition to go back to Presbyterian Village and negotiate a lower price on the property. With a lower price on the property, he would be able to afford to build and bake a profit. A more reasonable development that we would all love. Maybe small apartment building, very little, like originally planned by Presbyterian Village, that would be away from the creek. Then maybe some townhouses. There's, people like townhouses now, especially if they're maintained. People don't like to mow their own grass. So I'm not saying that this isn't an opportunity for him. I think that maybe he's just been misled. And that maybe Presbyterian Village has been misled to the, as to the value of the property. And that it could be resolved in a, a way that would be really happy for everyone. By, by just re- looking at it, looking at the whole big picture. So I would recommend that you deny the application. Thank you.
Okay, any comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the applicant. As the nature of these units, were they, are they intended to be senior units or just market rate apartments?
No, no senior units, just market rate apartments.
And so you know that previously it was approved for zoning for 190 units, which is about MF18, I guess, for that 11 acres. Is that kind of, was that kind of density just does not meet your business model? Because this would be MF24, about what, 250 units?
About 280 units.
280 units. I guess my point is, I like to go with the reality, you know, you got slapped down by the board pretty significantly for MF36. You know, I don't know what the sweet spot is for density and I believe in, in, in infill development. Just trying to get a sense of your, what you saw zoned before and what you're wanting, do you want now?
The PRD dealt a lot with independent living, senior living type stuff. We're going strictly multifamily units and the last time through the R5 that you guys approved was 36 units to the acre. So we could have built 400 plus units and this time through, we've reduced it by roughly a third of what we can build. Down to MF24 to 280 units. So it's not to say that we're going to build 280 units. We're not sure just yet because we're trying to get through this thing before we can figure out how many we're actually allowed to build. We don't want to spend the money and on architects and things like that to really nail down before we even have land that we can use. Because right now it's not usable. So we're trying to get through this before we can actually hammer down the amount of units that will work.
All right. And this, this is Presbyterian Village's property? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me ask a quick question. This may be of staff or the applicant. I heard you guys reference earlier, get approved the, I heard the applicant say that we were going from 36 to 24. That it was approved for 36. And I'm hearing staff say that it's, it's PR, it's an expired PRD. So. I'm, I don't.
I mean, we, we, we came to you guys back in December with an R5 rezoning from a PRD to an R5 designation, which allowed 36 units to the acre. And you guys passed that, so we went to the city board and the city board turned it down. So therefore we didn't get the 36 units to the acre that we had requested.
That clarifies it. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
I just have one comment before we vote, you know, the opposite of infill development is suburban sprawl. So I think density is, is in the current environment, post 2000 acre session is our reality. I don't think we're leaving in droves like they are in New York City. So I think people want to live near where they work in Little Rock. I just don't know what the sweet spot is for this and for the density. And I voted for it last time. But you know, the political decision hanging over your head is, is, you know, we're going to torture the board again. So I'm just not real comfortable with this going through without it being a PRD. Which, you know, 90% of our, our zoning cases are plans on development. And I understand the reasoning y'all gave for it, but I think you might have more comfort factor with the, the board if you had a PZD.
And if I can just make one more comment. Like they keep saying that there's 700 and something available units. They started a website, so I got on the website to see where they're getting their information from. I ran the exact same study that they did this morning. And within from I-430 to University and then from Cantrell down to Markham, that whole corridor. There's 67 units available to rent right now in that whole area. So there's definitely a need there. It's increased dramatically. And so we feel like that's something that, that we can provide right there to people that want to live there, you know.
Okay, any other thoughts or comments from commissioners? Okay, applicant, any other comments you'd like to?
There were several questions about the traffic. And we do have Ernie Peters with us. If there was any questions about the traffic that staff or the commission wanted to ask. We, we have Ernie here and he's available to speak on that. Just wanted to make him available and remind you that he's here.
Any specific questions related to traffic flow?
Chair, if I may speak a little bit about, I know we've, we've talked a lot about traffic in the previous application and also on this one. And concerns of traffic, but one of the other things I like to bring to the commission's attention and is some of the factors that we looked at. And we did, when we made that presentation to the board, there was questions raised about apartment complexes and development. And how we're going to look at that in the future. And we've talked about that and we've presented a study that other cities have done. And we're looking at that. But what we did is we kind of, we also looked at that for other areas of points of interest of what a multifamily developer needs or looks for. And one of those is, is the way people get around and not just by traffic, but also for the future, for planning of bikes, pedestrian type of access. So I do want to, we listed those points, important factors in there and I just want to kind of go through them for the record, for people that are also online. The stuff that we look for is this site is less than 1,000 feet from Rodney Perim. A minor arterial via Brookside Drive and 2,000 feet from Reservoir Road. The Brookside Drive and White Rock Lane, another minor arterial. So you have two arterials within close proximity to the site and that's an important deal for people, just for the access. The other one is the nearest bus route is at Rodney Perim, at Brookside Drive. You know, for people that are not going to drive, but use the bus system that is in our city, Rock Region Metro. The sidewalk access, you know, there is sidewalks on Brookside Drive to access that all the way down to Rodney Perim. They're within a third of a mile for this. They are located within numerous amenities in the developments adjacent to it. Just to the west of there. We're talking mini storages, grocery, pharmacy, restaurants, medical clinic. The nearest grocery store and pharmacy is from a third to half mile from this site. Nearest medical clinic is approximately one mile from the site. And in that area, that would be numerous locations for employment for that. The site is also located close to two parks, one mile from Butler Park and two miles from Reservoir Park for park amenities. The schools are located less than one mile is McDermott Elementary along Reservoir Road. There's two other schools, more than that. Within one mile radius, we have Little Rock Adventist Academy, Henderson Middle School, Terry Elementary, Williams Elementary and the Anthony School. And a good point I want to bring up is that multimodal transportation. There is a bike plan, a paved bike plan planned for, on the east side of this development, running along the creek. Some of it is on the residential side, but that's just conceptual. It could run on either side. And so that is another mode that people can use for transportation to other place, not just vehicle, vehicular traffic. So I just wanted to point out that through the commission, some of the other aspects that we looked at. That when we, for this, this application, for our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
One last thing before we get out of here. Last time through, we heard, like I said, their opposition and we've reduced our unit count. We've done the drainage analysis. We've done the traffic studies. We've tried to reach out and speak with them, but haven't got any response. So we're, we're trying to work with them, but haven't gotten any response. They're just strictly wanting to go straight to PRD. To control whatever it is that we're doing. So we're trying to give with them and help with them, but they're not willing, you know, to come to help us out. So we just hope that you guys will consider this.
Okay, all right, certainly. Commissioners, any additional comments or thoughts?
I just want to say that I appreciate Mr. Collins, what he gave because the pictorial, in my head, was really helpful. I want to thank you.
Yeah, yeah, these are certainly always challenging to look at and but certainly as much information as we can get is helpful. So we appreciate it. Okay, staff, I think we're ready for a vote. Can we get a motion for this particular item?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the item with staff comments included.
Okay, we have a motion for item number six. Can we have a second? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barry.
No.
Bettin.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Haynes.
Aye.
Ramon.
No.
Thomas.
No.
Vickers.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
The motion passes 7-3-0.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for everyone in attendance.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Okay.
The final item on the nice regular agenda is item number seven. File number Z-9576, probably located on the south side of Lee Summit Drive between, between Ren and Cardinal Roads. Damian Nelson, the owner of this 0.39 acre property located on the south side of Lee Summit Drive between Ren and Cardinal Roads, is requesting that the property be rezoned from R2 single-family district to R4 two-family district. The property is comprised of two lots, lots 36 and 37, Block 7, Westwood Heights Edition. And the rezoning is proposed in order to construct one duplex on each lot. The property is currently undeveloped and mostly wooded. The property does slope downward from front to back or north to south. Undeveloped R2 zone lots are located east and west of the property within the Westwood Heights Edition. Single-family residences on R2 zone lots, also in the Westwood Heights Edition, are located across Lee Summit Drive to the north. Undeveloped lots in the old Hyman Golf Course, Zoned R2 and PR are located to the south. The city's future land use plan designates this property as RL, residential low density, and the requested R4 zoning will not require plan amendment change. Staff is supportive of the requested R4 zoning. Staff views the request as reasonable. The property is located in an area zoned for single-family residences with a number of undeveloped lots to the east, west, and northeast within the Westwood Heights and Brookside Park additions. The proposed rezoning to allow two duplex structural structures will represent only a minor increase in the original planted density for this property. And staff believes that the requested rezoning to R4 will have no adverse impact on the surrounding properties. As such, staff recommends approval of the requested R4 rezoning.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you. Let's see, is the applicant present for item number seven? Okay, would you like to approach the podium and share your thoughts? Please state your name.
Greetings, greetings Chairman and all the commissioners and great people of Little Rock. I am Damian Nelson, and I would like to reserve my time to respond to those that may have opposition to my participating in the, in the city's development plan for the area.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Nelson. Let's see, it looks like we've got four people have signed up. First name I have is Dr. Robert Williams. Would you like to approach the podium, state your name, and share with us your thoughts?
Good evening to all the commissioners and chairman and to everyone here. My name is Dr. Robert Williams, and I'm the president of the Westwood, Wesley Hills Neighborhood Association. And I'm speaking on the behalf of the people. We did put a poll out concerning the development, and the 97% of the people voted no, and only one person was, wanted to see what, but no one in the poll that we sent out to the people voted yes. And I'm here today, of course, on the behalf of the neighborhood association and the, and then the phone calls that I'm getting at 11:30 and 12 o'clock at night, upset with me because they feel like that is, this is my fault that they want to develop this duplex in our neighborhood because they feel like that if we allow this to happen, then someone is going to come along and put some apartments there. And then when they bring out the apartments, it's going to change the entire neighborhood. And some of the people concerned was that they had seen, this is why they moved over into Western Hills, because the area that they used to live in, they seen where people bring in apartments and duplexes and how they changed the neighborhood where the grandmother and grandparents allow their grandchildren to come in, and the grandchildren come in and change the whole scenario. So when we did put it out, the people, 97% of the people was asking that we ask you all to please consider voting no. And this is the only demand of the people. That's who I'm speaking for. My name is Dr. Robert Williams, President, Wesley and Wesley Hills Neighborhood Association. Thank you so much.
Okay, yeah, any questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you, Dr. Williams. Next name I have to speak is Karen Cornwell. Karen Cornwell. Okay, thank you, yeah, if you can approach the podium, state your name and share with us your thoughts.
Karen Cornwell, I am, I live, there would be one house between my house and the, the tiny one-lane street that would be right in front of the duplexes. The, the neighborhood is a very old, quiet neighborhood, a lot of people that have lived there for a long time. I've had my house there for 25 years. And we just have a lot of questions, including the fact of then could someone come in and build more and more and more? The, the wooded area, it is a sloped wooded area. And it's an area that's part of the green area that is, the city is, is working on connecting all the parks, Hyman Park and Western Hills Park and Boyle Park. And they're, they're working on connecting parks from, you know, one side of the city to, to another, all the way down to Hot Springs. We're all for development. I'm, I mean, I've loved it when new houses have gone in on empty lots. But you're talking single-family homes and then, you know, what's next? We're, we're taking it away from single-family homes and why can't they be single-family homes going in there? It is a, a single-lane road right there. And we've seen no information about the traffic, you know, what's going to happen with the road. It's also on a slope, so are they going to come in and add a bunch of dirt, take down all the trees and add, add a whole lot of dirt or what? You know, so, so I'd be interested in a lot more information as well as to what's going to happen to this quiet, woodsy area where, you know, that's where I want to live with trees surrounding me. And in the middle of the city, that's an area you can get for cheaper than you can get, you know, out Chanel or, or something like that. And so that's why I lived there and why my house is actually paid off because it is, it is an area where some of us could move in and still have the quiet, woodsy area in the middle of the city that we all love and that my neighbors, you know, all love having there. So, thank you.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners, Ms. Cornwell? Okay, thank you. Let's see, it looks like we do have a online person, looks like a Mr. Greg Meriwether. Mr. Meriwether, are you a chance on?
Hello?
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 Okay, I believe we can hear you, Mr. Meriwether. Yeah, go ahead and share with us your thoughts.
Yes, I stay about 150 feet from the proposed site for the duplexes. And the, the lady just mentioned the street there is very narrow. And the, is that, the kids that play along the street there with the additional traffic with these duplexes, I don't think it'll be safe for the kids in the area. And. And the, once he get these two in, what's to say he's not going to come back and ask for, come back and ask for more to be built along the side of these two? I just, this is the way to get started, to add more to those two. And I think he proposed this before and voted down by the board. So why is it now that he feels? That this should pass now? And that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate those comments. Any, any questions, commissioners, from Mr. Meriwether? Okay, we have one more speaker, looks like Levita L. Wills Hale. Okay, Ms. Hale, yeah, if you can approach the podium, state your name and share with us your thoughts.
Good evening, I'm Levita Wills Hale. I reside at 7922 Lassie Lane. I am a 25-year resident and homeowner in Western Hills. My husband and I purposely looked at several opportunities to purchase in Little Rock 25 years ago, and we were drawn to this neighborhood for some, for several key reasons. Chief among them is this is a neighborhood that has a rich history within our city. And I'm going to read my prepared remarks to expedite the time. But this neighborhood has historic origins. It was originally referred to as Douglasville. And as you drive west on Colonel Glenn Road, you will see some of the smaller buildings there that still have the monikers referring to it as Douglasville. We are diverse in terms of ethnicity, socioeconomic status, and in terms of the age of families. One of the main characteristics of the neighborhood that makes it a unique destination for homeowners, as we've already heard, is the green belt that surrounds this neighborhood, which also includes parkland, creeks such as Brody and Forest Creek that border it. The parkland in Western Hills actually still boasts the old grain silo when this was a dairy farm, back in the days when this area was still in the county. My first concern is there is no record, we have a long record of opposing multifamily dwellings. As a matter of fact, as a past Neighborhood Association president, my last count of our newsletter delivery to homes was about 800 newsletters for the entire neighborhood, which says, yes, this is low density. We oppose the construction of multifamily residences on what is now Western Hills parkland. We were successful in doing that. This permit request acknowledges that the neighborhood lies within the Bull Park Planning District, which is of significance in terms of its environmental and ecological benefits. We also know that we have groups that come to our neighborhood for bird watching, for hiking, for bike riding, and other outdoor pursuits. Yet, this applicant, or this application, doesn't refer to any environmental impact study or analysis. The master street plan indicates that there may be a need for a dedication of right-of-way and may require street improvements. But no data on the increase of traffic or traffic patterns is provided in terms of a traffic study. So we are left to take the developer's word for this. Might I add and reiterate that this is a tranquil street? This is more of a lane than a street. So providing that access off of Ren and Cardinal will be problematic. We also know that this would be the first and only duplex, duplex or two-family housing in this area. Again, this is in stark contrast to our historical pattern of single-family. And yes, the neighborhood has rental property, it does indeed, but these are single-family dwellings. We see this request as it's already been stated and as the application data supported by, from the staff already indicates that there would be room to do more, more lots in this same area. So we see this request again as a gateway development that begins with a modest change, just a slight change in the going from single-family to two-family, but possibly could end in multifamily development. We have seen or have been given no assurances from the developer. Again, this is in stark contrast to the original planning for this area. We are not opposed to growth. We are not opposed to growth and development. I am an entrepreneur and a small business owner myself. My husband and I, we understand bottom line and return on investment. But at the same time, we are opposed to development that is not strategic, to bad development. That may destabilize homeowners and home ownership. Quite frankly, we see this neighborhood as a hidden jewel within Little Rock. We see this neighborhood as being an opportunity to provide moderate homes and moderately priced homes for first-time home buyers and families. This would be a really good opportunity to think strategically about that kind of development. And I know that Little Rock needs moderately priced homes for home buyers. There are several unanswered questions in this request regarding sewer capacity, regarding street access and right-of-way, regarding even how you would place or if there's a need for fire access. And because this is a hilly neighborhood, how the fire or emergency responders would get into this very steep, graded, sloped area would be a huge concern. These are unanswered questions. We would ask that you decline this permit, or at the very least defer this matter for further study so we can have these questions answered, so that we can look at the environmental impact. We've already put in calls to our friends with environmental groups such as Audubon, Arkansas, who regularly makes trips to this area to look at the wildlife and particularly the, the bird habitat and other, other issues here. Finally, this is our home. Many of us could choose to live and afford to live, myself and my husband included, anywhere in Little Rock that we so choose. But we choose to live here. We were drawn to this neighborhood because of its historic nature, because of the beauty of the neighborhood, because of the closeness of our neighbors. And I will say this, rest assured, because we chose to live and stay, we are willing to exhaust the time, we're willing to work with the developer, we're willing to exhaust our resources to the extent that we can, and any effort necessary to preserve what we have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hale. Any, any questions or comments for Ms. Hale?
Chairman, I have a question for Ms. Hale.
Yes, Commissioner Vickers.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure for the record, Ms. Hale stated on sewer capacity and the street right-of-way and fire safety and hazard, did you have any data supporting that? Because I think we're looking at two duplexes, I think. So I, I want to make sure your concern is, we want to make sure that you address that. Do you have any data supporting that about the sewer capacity?
Yes, sir, thank you, Commissioner Vickers. I am reading directly from the applicant's application, where there are issues purported with questions that have not been answered regarding sewer, sewer clearage from the central Arkansas water. The fire department has not issued a report related to the fire hydrant. None of the utilities have responded to this application. Sewer main extension required with easements of new sewer services required, capacity analysis required, analysis required, but we do not see that data here. So I'm reading directly from file number Z-9576, rezoning from R2 to R4.
No, ma'am, we, we understand that I have that data. I think we all have that data. My importance or understanding for the association and the neighborhood is, do you have any independent third-party studies or data of your concerns of this duplex that will be proposed by this developer? Do you have any data saying that there is a sewer's capacity threat up on the neighborhood by this duplex?
And I'm not suggesting there's a threat, I'm saying we don't know that there isn't a threat. Because this application doesn't address that and, and Mr., excuse me, the applicant doesn't provide any countervailing information that suggests that there isn't one. So my point simply is this, we don't know what we don't know.
Correct, so you have, so there is no independent third-party study that's been done by the association of you personally, or with the association of the neighborhood?
No, and nor am I aware of one that's been done by the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Assistant Chairman, a question for city staff. Is the, the street built to collector's standard? What's the current build-out of that street? Is Public Works left? Monty, would you happen to know, the summit?
Well, it is a narrow street. It's kind of an unusual circumstance that you have here, but it, it is one that, that does exist in places. in places throughout Little Rock. The Westwood Heights addition, which these lots along the south side of Lee's Summit are included in that subdivision as well as the houses to the north. That subdivision was, was created somewhere around nineteen seventy and the lots, many of the lots were final-platted, some were not. So the preliminary plat is still valid. It appears that what happened is that some of these lots were sold off by the developer before they were final-platted, which is typically where you get your street improvements, with the final plat. And, and that should not have been done at that time, but it is what it is, you know, at this point. So that's why you have the street that's, is a little more narrow than a typical residential street. And at this point, since all those lots that have multiple owners, as well as if you look at your zoning map, that large area to the east of Cardinal, Cardinal Road, all of that is final plat, or preliminary platted in lots that have been sold off to numerous owners. So Jimmy may have more insight into this, but my, my thought is that it's probably going to take a public project to improve this roadway in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that is correct, Bonnie. Chairman, or Commissioner Barry, the since this is, single-family duplexes are exempt when they do this. And so even if somebody come in and, and wanted to build a single-family residential lot and all the lots have been platted, you would still have that same condition of the road and the improvement. So any improvements that's needed would have to be put in on either a bond or sales tax initiative, not the one that's currently going on because that's, we're coming to the very end of that one for one that's coming up. And so for this one, you know, it's a redevelopment of lots that sit there for a while. I don't know the exact years. How long has it been platted, Monty?
The, the houses to the north that are there were developed from around nineteen seventy to the late seventies. So the plat would have occurred right around nineteen seventy.
And so I do understand a lot of the concerns that the, the neighbors brought up, but we would have those same issues that they're bringing up at a single-family residential. And they're not proposing to do all the lots that are on the duplexes right now, just what we're looking at. And we would consider that as it comes in, you know, for improvements as needed.
See, I've got a question for staff. According to you, Jimmy, it looks like this is actually the West, the Westwood Heights subdivision that the, the property resides in.
That is correct.
Okay. And, and being so, are there any other multifamily units or any multifamily developments in that subdivision? Or would this be the first?
Not that I'm aware of.
This would be the first?
We consider duplexes as multifamily?
The, the zoning, zoning-wise, no. You have, you have single-family, and then R4 is considered two-family, and then you get into your multifamily from that point on.
Thank you.
Okay. And in revising my question, is there any R4 zoning currently in the Westwood Heights?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so everything currently is single-family? Okay. Good catch. Any other questions, commissioners?
Question to the applicant. Were you able to meet with the homeowners association and to, to review plans and to let them know your, your plans?
Yes, Commissioner Brooks, I spoke with the Neighborhood Association president months ago, probably about three months or so. And when I spoke with him, I got good feedback that, you know, because I explained to him, I got a chance to talk to him about exactly what I wanted to do and how I've owned property there in that neighborhood now for fifteen years and how I intend to retire from the public schools here in the next five to eight and how my mother has recently retired from Little Rock schools and, and how I could see townhouses that would allow us to appreciate the varied nature that some of the neigh, some of the neighbors were speaking about. It's a beautiful area. I taught right down the street at Western Hills Elementary, so I'm familiar with the kiddos in the neighborhood. And I really do value the land. More importantly, I was taking it, I got a chance to look at what the city's plan for the area. And I thought, well, this would be great that I could move here, stay, and not have to maintain a lawn, enjoy the view, the very view that some of the neighbors were speaking about. The initial process that goes in is a duplex, but I would like to convert them to townhouses. Townhouses because I think it's ideal for townhouses, which I shared. And of course, townhouse and duplex, the difference is ownership. Apparently, the ownership would be with me. And I would eventually like to make a lease, I don't know, maybe a lease to own. But I can assure this, this panel, the commission, and the neighbors that I have no intent of disrupting the ecosystem, but actually adding value and adding to its rich diversity. R2 to R4, I'm speaking to the choir, I know you guys are aware, this is not a multifamily. This is not going to be a lot of traffic. And again, I've got classmates that literally live right across from my property, friends that live blocks over that we've talked. I've been, like I said, in and out of this neighborhood for fourteen years. And so, and I also wanted to just address one thing that I do look forward to answering any questions that the neighbors would want to talk to me about and even their suggestions about what we can do to make it so unique. Because as I look at the city plan and think about how nice the area will be, you know, and because it's on a sloped lot, that gives, that gives us an opportunity to take advantage of the very beautiful view that we see in this room. It makes this room so nice because we can look out and see a skyline. As I talked to some of the students that live in the area, you know, I was able to talk to them about the history as a history teacher, about how Lee's Summit got its name. So I would definitely want to add to the value and the rich history and culture in the neighborhood, and I'm looking forward to that opportunity.
So with those comments, you've only spoken with the president of the association and, and not the, the neighborhood, the, the neighbors?
I've spoken to neighbors individually, but not in a formal setting. I was, my understanding is that the president would make me aware of the meetings. And I think because he said something about the COVID and the pandemic situation that they could not meet. But I, like I said, I've actually talked to real-life people there, know them. Like I said, my classmates live there. Like, we graduated from school together. We, I go to their homes and we break bread together, so. But as far as a formal meeting, to answer your question, Commissioner Brooks, I have not attended a formal meeting that was led by the current leadership in the Neighborhood Association.
So I have a question, Chair, for the president of the association. Is there a meeting? Do y'all have a deadline of timeline of when you guys will meet back in person where the applicant can meet with the neighbors to hear and allow them to voice their concerns?
We met personally with several people in the park, but not in a closed setting inside a building, but we met in the park. And then several people called me, even as of last night, like I said, you know, eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock last night, upset, expressing their concern about this because they was not, because they was not happy with what was going on.
So, just so I'm clear, you're speaking on behalf of the association. You are against the duplexes being built at this time, or you are for the duplex?
We all, the Neighborhood Association is against it.
Okay.
Every, all the person of the board and then all the people in the neighborhood, but there was no one voted yes for it in the neighborhood. Everyone had voted for it, even Mr. and Mrs. Strohl is here and several people, everyone that's here now. They're, they're, they are opposing it. They, they do not want it. And I only speak, you know, on behalf of the people in the Neighborhood Association as the president.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
There's still a question that I didn't hear the answer to that was asked. The applicant had an opportunity to sit down with the association face-to-face and discuss it. The applicant has talked to people, you've talked to people, the two haven't gotten together. That's what I understand. It sounds like that the applicant needs to meet with the association to find out what the issues are and how they could potentially, possibly be resolved.
When, when he presented to me, I went back to the board.
No, no, I'm not talking just to you. I'm talking about, you've talked to several people in the neighborhood as president. He's talked to friends, but he's not been given an opportunity to talk to the association, just the president.
Absolutely. That's, that's right. But we have to vote on what we want to have in our meeting. And he, I, we, we never did actually give him the opportunity to talk with the people because it didn't reach that far yet. And if the board didn't agree with it and then the people in the neighborhood didn't agree with it, then I, you know, they, it's not me personally, but they think that we're beating a dead horse.
Excuse me, Dr. Williams?
Yeah, I, this is Michael Vickers.
I was just wanted to ask and make a statement. So you're saying it didn't even make the agenda for the association? To even for have them even come talk to the people?
At, at that point, it didn't. And then when COVID hit, we haven't had the opportunity to even allow him to even to make it that far. Because if the board say no, and then the people still can come and say, this is what we want on the agenda. But even when we, after I spoke with the board, then I went to several people in the neighborhood that always normally come to the meeting. And I explained to them, and they said no. So there's, there was nothing I was able to do about that.
Well, Dr. Williams, I mean, just personally, I don't think that's ninety-seven percent of the people. I mean, we want to do what's good for the, definitely for the community. And if the community doesn't want it, then that's, that's definitely an obvious choice. But I don't know if that's ninety-seven percent of the people. I mean, I'm not saying neither here or there, but I would hope that you all can at least talk to each other because it appears that y'all haven't really spoken to each other and really sit down and had a good idea of what this developer is saying or what the neighborhood is saying. I think that there is some type of disconnect. I would hope that y'all can at least have a conversation or, or allow to, a presentation so y'all can get the full scale.
But, but ninety-seven percent of the people, well, the people that voted, ninety-seven percent of them disagree with it.
How many, how many of those people that voted? You're saying ninety-seven percent, Commissioner Brooks? Out of the ninety-seven percent, what was the percent, what, how many people voted?
Forty-two people voted.
And the community has how many residents?
Now, we're right at close to nine hundred.
Okay.
Household, yes.
Yes, but.
Go ahead. Come, come on. Yes, please. I think there's some confusion or, and I think it's a minor thing.
If you, if you could pull your mic just a little closer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think what we are discovering here in this moment is that during the time of COVID, a notice was sent to our Neighborhood Association mailbox, which the president retrieved, read. We had several meetings on the books that were canceled because we have a, a tradition of gathering at the elementary school and meeting in person. The issue then went to the Neighborhood Association Board, which it was tabled until we could all meet. But I think in the process, this hearing was ahead of that process, is what he's trying to explain. So in the absence of a full meeting, he did what he could do best, which was to poll electronically as many people. I don't know about you all, if you've ever done any surveys, you know, you can get a low return. So, but that, that sample is significant. And, but we are, well, I, I can just speak for myself. I think we would welcome the opportunity to have meetings and discussions and to gather data. Commissioner Vic, Vickers asked about data. I, I'm, I'm a PhD student. I'm, I'm all about data and empirical data. So I, I think anything that we can do to advance this. But again, we've already testified, so I'm not testifying again here. But I just want to impress upon you as a commission for planning and development, planning and development, that you have a jewel here, you have a neighborhood that does not have one single two-family residents here in our neighborhood that ought to speak for something, and that's it. But it wasn't a deliberate attempt to not meet with Mr. Nelson. I think we just had a lot of dynamics with COVID that we could not react to quickly enough to be in front of this hearing. Thank you.
If I might, I've got a question to the applicant. So what, what we're hearing and what I'm understanding is that there, you, you have not had a opportunity to formally present to the Neighborhood Association or a, in a manner that would allow you to describe your proposal. Would that be a correct statement?
Yes, sir. The, the Neighborhood Association failed to make that available.
Is that something that you're desires of?
Well, at this time, because I did the things that's required to be here today, even during the pandemic, I think that, you know, I, I did what I had to do as a citizen, a tax-paying citizen, homegrown, raised here, product of the city. I don't, I don't know why they were unable to meet, but we're meeting today. And I'm glad to see all of you here today. So I don't know why they were, were not able to meet and to invite me in to share because I'm all about that. Those in the community that know me know that. And so again, I don't, I don't, my, what I propose to do has nothing to do with multifamily, a bunch of apartments in the area. I was, I'm attracted to the area because of its, its being a jewel. And so there's nothing that I want to do to disrupt the things that's currently going on. As a matter of fact, with the development, I'm certain that it would improve the, the infrastructure, the road, and the.
If I might, I've got a second part to my question. Do you feel that you have approached the homeowners association in a manner that would have given them an opportunity to meet with you?
Yes, sir. I've emailed them.
Okay, that's all I need. Okay. All right. Jamie?
Chair, if I may, this would be a good opportunity to, to point out that while staff, planning and development, and the commission and also the board does encourage applicants coming in for development within the city to meet with their neighborhoods and neighborhood associations. It is neither mandated by state law nor city code that that is mandated to do so. While we do encourage that and, and as we have started notifying more neighborhood associations of their, our applications, and as you see on this application, we not only notified the current neighborhood association in the location, but we notified, we are notifying all neighborhood associations with, that are registered within the city of Little Rock of the applications. We are truly trying to reach out for everybody to give their input. I do understand as presented, and we've had those same scenarios of meeting with people during the pandemic, but we've persevered through and tried to get, you know, avenues to be social distance and, and try to reach people and, and so that they can meet. And this is also, I want to make a point, that this is also a public meeting for them to bring up their concerns, and which they have. So it's a good time to discuss that and, and, and bring that forth with applicants and the commissioners to make a decision. Is this a good fit for this location? And do we feel like we need to discuss more with the neighborhood association or the people that is affected by the development?
Assistant Commissioner.
City staff, that was well said. Also, might I suggest that, you know, these particular zoning cases are automatically advanced to the board. So there'll be opportunities for the neighborhood and applicant to meet between now and the, the board consideration. Is that correct?
That's correct. If, if, if this is decided upon in favor at the commission and the commission for, is an ordinance for adoption at the board, it is typically somewhere around that three to four weeks from this point to get on an agenda. Depends on the cycle agenda of that, and that gives time for the applicant that could meet because that is also a question that is raised multiple times at the board level. And they'll ask me, did, who was notified and who, who met? And they'll ask me, who was notified and who met? So that would give ample time if the neighborhood association would, wanted to meet and discuss that and also are more than welcome to attend that meeting at that time to express what their opinions are and after that meeting, too.
All right. Appreciate those details. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. I'd ask for a motion for this item.
Moved.
Okay. Have a motion. Do we have a second? Correct, move. Yeah, motion for approval. And, okay, we have a motion and a second. I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Barry?
Aye.
Fenton?
Aye.
Brooks?
No.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Ramon?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Vickers?
Aye.
Vogel?
No.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Mr. Hurd, could you restate the count, please, for the record?
Eight, eight to two to zero.
I think that's, yes.
The motion passes eight votes in favor, two votes against, and no votes absent.
Thank you. That's just for correction of the record. Thank you, everybody. It's turned. Okay, all right. Motion passes. Thank you for your attendance on this item. Okay, I think that was a final item. At this time, do we have any citizen comments? Any non-citizen comments? Any comments whatsoever? Hearing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion, second. Second. All right, not disputed. We are adjourned.
Kind of over/underweight.